It is now 6:30 and I call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. It appears that we have decorum, Tom is not here yet. We will now move into executive session under O R S 192.6602H to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. For the audience, we plan to be back at 7 o'clock. We won't start the next segment of the meeting until 7 o'clock or later depending on how the executive session goes. Thank you. We will return now to open session. It's 7 o'clock. Let's rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, number five is the Board Superintendent Operating Agreement. Jonathan's going to read it for us.
Sure. All right. Under collaborative governance, members of the board and superintendent will work together in good faith as a team in the best interests of our students modeling a willingness to learn together. Board members will recognize and respect the superintendent's responsibility to manage the school district and to direct employees in district and school matters. Board members will give careful consideration, listening to all perspectives to all issues brought to the board by individuals and district leadership. The board may only make decisions out of properly called meetings. Board members recognize that individual members have no authority to take individual action and policy or district and school administrative matters unless so authorized by board vote. Under communication agreements, board members must follow the chain of responsibility and communicate directly with the superintendent when a question arises or a concern or complaint is voiced by a staff member, student, parent, or community member. Board members will endeavor to communicate directly with the superintendent or board chair prior to meetings of the board to address questions and/or concerns about agenda items. Board members and the superintendent recognize that good answers often require preparation in advance of board meetings. When a board member and/or the superintendent has an individual concern, he or she must communicate one-on-one with any member of the board superintendent team as appropriate.
Thank you, Jonathan. And looking at that agreement is gonna come up in our agenda tonight. But let's move to number six, the agenda review. Would somebody like to make a motion regarding the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? All right, we will vote.
Owen?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
All in favor.
And we are going to also move to the consent agenda. Hopefully everybody had a chance to look at all of those items. And is there a motion to approve the consent agenda or otherwise?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Owen?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
All in favor.
And now we are entering into our public comment section. Is there anybody waiting online to give a public comment?
We have maybe one or two members of the public, so if they want to use the raise of the hand feature.
My statement is super blurry, but I'm gonna... Oh. Thank you, sir. We're glad you're here and welcome you to address the board with your ideas, concerns, or compliments. Please keep the following in mind. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized by the board chair. If attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom. For the record, please provide your name and relationship to the district. Please keep individual remarks to three minutes. If speaking as a representative on behalf of a group of three or more, comment time will be extended to five minutes. A second public comment period will occur later in the meeting that is specific to discussion and action items only. The board will not hear complaints against individual district staff or board members during public comment. Please understand that the board's primary role is to listen and you will not receive an immediate response. Finally, remember, we all model the way for our students and ask that you share your thoughts respectively and in accordance with the Silver Falls School District Board decorum agreement. All right, well, it appears that there are no audience members wishing to give public comment, so we will move on to the next item. Which is Administrator and Staff Reports. We're at 9A Superintendent Report. Scott?
Thank you, Jennifer. I'm gonna wait for Daniel to pull that up. And while Daniel's doing that, if you could do me a huge favor, is there a way that you can pull up the presentation in front of you on your laptops from the link? Because we're gonna do things a little bit differently for my updates and there's a method to the madness here. So I'll just give you a second to pull that up if you could.
And that's the email that you sent?
Yes, the email link. Just click on that. And you can just look up when you're done. All good? Okay, thank you all. I really appreciate that. And before I get into this agenda item or this point of information that I'd like to share with you regarding the bond, I got an email earlier this afternoon from Janet. And I wanna make sure that I don't forget to address it. So I just wanna address it upfront. And that is just an update on the meal, the charging of meals, for example, at our schools here in Silver Falls. And as you know, as a board, you approved the new meal prices at our last board meeting. And we don't have a whole lot of new information to share with you tonight, but I think it's important that the public knows that we're paying attention to it. Right now, we're also entering in our free and reduced price meal applications as well. And we've also applied for a grant that would enable us to have free meals for all students at Robert Frost and Mark Twain. And those, of course, are two large Title I schools, along with the middle school in Butte Creek. So a few weeks out from waiting to hear on that, and Marina is working hard on that. So just wanted to make sure that I mention that, that we're paying attention to it. We have one community member that I text with regularly, and I really appreciate it. If you wanna know what my opinion is as an educator, I believe that we're in the year 2022, and we need food to learn. And so I think the prices for meals, when we look at it from the big picture, really should be a rather minor expense. And I do believe that our government should kick in and help us with that. No child should ever go hungry in the year 2022. But that's just, that's my personal opinion, so now you know my thoughts on the subject. But I wanted to make sure that, Steve, did I leave anything out?
No. The program that Scott's referring to is called C E P or Community Eligibility Provision. And Marina thought at first glance, based on the numbers, that Robert Frost and Mark Twain would both be eligible, but we don't know the answer to that yet. There's a lot of data that has to be sent and analyzed by, to O D and analyzed by O D, so it will be a few weeks. He did mention Butte Creek and the middle school. Those are also Title I schools. We don't think they would qualify at least this year for C E P. But we're working on that, see if we can get some help there, so.
Any questions on that from the board?
Appreciate that update, though. Thank you.
Of course, of course, Janet. Okay, so I'm gonna walk you through a presentation this evening on the Bond Advisory Committee and the Bond Advisory Committee Charge. And so the strategy that I'm gonna employ tonight, we're gonna go to a little bit of the teacher in me, and I wanna have the information directly in front of you so you can follow along. And I'm gonna go against everything I learned in PowerPoint 101, and I'm gonna go over every single word in this PowerPoint. And I don't mean that to be a pain in the neck, please understand. But if it's one thing that we need in high-leverage teaching practices and in student engagement, is number one, a clear purpose, and number two, a clear target. And so I see Jennifer nodding because she knows those two things, those two things have to come into play before we can even start. So if you could pull that up in front of you, and I am going to switch to the first slide. And this is the charge here. And so you see that in front of you. I don't expect you to read it off of this little screen on this slide here, but I'm gonna break it up into other slides, as you've seen. So there's nothing that's coming on these next slides that isn't in that document right there. But it's really important that we end tonight with a clear understanding of what the committee's charge is. And this was, in my opinion, the number one key learning from the long-range facilities master planning process, because that charge was never set at the beginning. And I think this is a real learning for all of us to say, we had a very drawn-out process, and it was confusing along the way for just about everybody on the committee. And it really can be tied back to that there really wasn't a charge. We haven't found one. And so that's why I'm being a little bit of a stickler for the language tonight. So going to the overview, I'm gonna read that for you, and I'd like you to follow along if you would. The Silver Falls School District 4J Board of Education shall establish a Bond Advisory Committee comprised of 21 community members plus necessary administrative and support staff to consider options for submitting a potential capital construction bond to voters in November 2023. The superintendent will serve as liaison to the group. That's the overview. And I'll take questions after each slide if you have any. Does anybody have any question on that overview? It's 21 community members because that's what we ended up with. Really, we're sticking to 20. We had to add in this extra one. It was just, it just made the dynamic of the group. And so we added that one extra.
And maybe, could you, just for the people who haven't been following along that might be in the audience, just like what the recipe was?
Yeah, and I addressed that at the end, at the end of the slides here. I'll have a few points to make there, if that's okay. Moving to the next slide, the charge. Erin, could you read that for us, please?
The school board is considering a potential capital construction bond measure to address the most urgent facilities' needs identified by the district's Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, which met from 2019 through early 2022. The charge of the bond committee is to consider various options for a new bond proposal. The committee will meet four to five times from September 2022 till April 2023, and will...
Okay, and we'll stop there. Thank you very much, Erin, for doing that. We know the dates. I've sent those out. And so just know that all of the committee members have been informed also. They will be on Thursdays. We will have meetings October, November, December, and January at this point. And then there will be a follow-up meeting to present the recommendation to the board in late spring, after we've done our listening sessions, after we've asked the public, is this something that you would support? How can we make it better in Phase Two of the bond? Any questions there, Owen?
Well, I noticed you skipped number two, type of committee. And I was just curious on that. You say this is a board committee, comma, that may submit a recommendation? And it just struck me that word "may" seems intentional, but maybe it's not.
Well, yeah, that's a really good question, Owen. Say our polling comes back and it's not even worth it to proceed with a bond. I would find it difficult to have the committee work on a recommendation that we knew was just not in the ballpark. So that's the reason why. Good question. Any other questions? Okay, moving to the next slide, the charge continued. Number one, review the facility's needs identified by the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. Again, this is the charge, the charge of the Bond Advisory Committee. Consider options for financing a potential bond, including amount of bond and length of payback period. Develop a timeline and long-term plan for addressing capital improvement projects related to facility's needs. Consider community feedback in creating the recommendation, and recommend to the school board a potential bond package that could be submitted to voters. Any questions there? Oh, and I'm sorry, I should be moving this for... And just so our public knows if they're watching, this will be posted as well.
I just wanted to give another shout-out to the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. I really enjoyed how the Wenahha representatives said that this is a continuation of that work. So honoring that work as much as we can, I think, is appropriate.
That's a really good point, Jennifer, because the last thing that we wanna do is recreate. There's a lot of great work, comprehensive work that came out of the committee, and we intend to just continue on with that. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have, I was wondering, is the committee also going to consider other architectural firms if they understand their directive and spirit to...
Yes.
Because I know that when I was first on it, it was shared with our very small group that when we selected the architecture firm we did, that there was an option down the road, and I don't know if that still stands.
Yes, that's a good question. So we had, B L R B took us through the long-range facilities process. They weren't the firm we started with. That was another firm. But it in no way obligates us to go with them once a bond is passed. So there'll be a procurement process for that, I'm sure, Steve, that we'll get to if we do indeed pass a bond. And you would be a big part of that.
Would any members of this group be a part of that, too? Or is that a whole different thing that Steve organizes?
No, I think the, I don't wanna speak for you, Steve, but there is, there will be a really strict process that we'll need to follow.
Okay.
And depending on whether or not four of you are elected to the board again, I can't answer whether or not you'll be a part of it, but certainly that would be an option.
Yeah, there'd be a separate process for that. You know, we had a, we had a work group of folks that got together for the transportation, R F P, process. And this process would be a group of people as well that would go through the procurement process. But the Bond Advisory Committee, committee as constructed, would be done at that point. That'd be a ways down the road. But yeah, there would have to be an official procurement process for that, yeah.
All right, thank you.
The other thing I wanted to say again, just in case people haven't been following every word that we say, the last time we met with our partners in this project, I think all of us were keen on really, you know, supporting the committee in these charges. Like, we're not, it's not our aim to change anything that they come back with, that we really trust this process. And yeah, I just wanted to mention that just because of past history.
Good point.
Thank you, Jennifer. The next slide, if you can go ahead and click, Dan, wanna talk about the authority of the Bond Advisory Committee. Could we have, Jonathan, could you read that for us? Authority of Bond Advisory Committee?
Sure. The committee will make a recommendation to the school board and will have no independent authority to obligate the district's funds nor to issue directions to the district's administration. The committee's recommendations will be used to inform decisions made by the superintendent and the Silver Falls school board.
I would just like to say that although some may think that this is a strongly worded slide, we just believe in clear expectations, that's all. We don't wanna set false expectations. But I can tell you that the extent to which we're successful passing a bond will depend on how open we are to feedback from our community. Because again, it has nothing to do with the bond I want, nothing to do with the bond that we want in this room. It's what is the bond that our community is willing to support. That is a winning strategy. But I just wanna make sure that we're clear on the expectation, that it is an advisory committee. Any questions? Next slide, duration of charge. The committee will meet four to five times from September 2022 to April 2023, and will submit a recommendation to the school board on or before May 22, 2003. So my goal as your superintendent, and I'll share my goals with you at the board work session, is to ensure that you are confident to take action on a bond recommendation by May 22. That's one of my goals. And so it will be my responsibility to make sure that you have all the tools you need to confidently take action on that bond. Any questions on that? Committee appointments, and this is where we'll talk about the makeup of the committee, Jennifer. Committee appointments, appointments are made by the board. You tasked me with the responsibility to set up the committee, and I also took in all of your input. And I believe we honor just about every single recommendation. And you'll see that when we pull up the list. Appointments are made by the board and are intended to last the duration of the committee's work. The makeup of the committee will include representatives from a variety of community stakeholder groups. Okay, so I wanna first thank my team for assisting in this, and Derek McElfresch, and more specifically, Steve Nielsen. Steve and I have spent hours tossing around different ideas, different people, different people that bring a certain skill set or a dynamic to the group. We tried to form a group of the majority of participants not having served on a board committee at all or in a long time. And so that was really important, too. We don't wanna see the similar faces on every committee that we have in Silver Falls School District. That's really important. So when you look at the list, I think it'll be pretty obvious to you, because to me, these are pretty well-known names, if you could go to the next slide, Dan. And really, those are just the notes I shared with you at the work session. And this is the Bond Advisory Committee. All members have confirmed their participation enthusiastically. That's one of the really neat things for me, is to see the energy around the bond start to come to fruition. And if, I'm just gonna walk you through the organizational chart if I could. So on the top, you'll see the Silver Falls School District constituency. And that constituency is who you report to. And then you see the Silver Falls School District Board of Education, and that's who I report to. And then on the left-hand side, you see the school board observers. We have Jennifer Traeger, our board chair, Owen Von Flew, and Janet Alenak. I wanna say and express my sincere gratitude for your willingness to be a part of this. It means a lot to have you as observers. And you will notice that you are not connected at all to the Board Advisory Committee. You're only there to observe. The district team is made up of myself as a superintendent, Steve Nielsen, our Director of Finance and Operations, Brett Davison, our middle school principal, Lauren Stanley, Director of Facilities, Derek McElfresch, our Communications Coordinator, and Debbie Vallaf, our Board Secretary. And then on the right side, you'll see Wenahha Group, Dave Fischel, and Cassie Hibbert will be facilitators of the group. You met them at the board work session. And then Wright, Public Affairs and Patinkin Research. And so Jeremy Wright outsources to Patinkin Research, who specialize in polling. That poll, by the way, went out on the 6th, and we just received it late last week. And once we've had a chance to digest that information, we will think of what the best process is to share it with you. And the whole point of that is to make sure that we have it all ready to go for our first meeting on October 6th, from 6 to 8 in this room. Any questions on the organizational chart? Steve, I don't know if you wanted to say anything about it. This truly was a process to go through, and I thoroughly enjoyed it, reaching out to each participant, tossing names back and forth, getting recommendations from you, the board, and from other members of the community, other stakeholder groups.
As I say, Scott did a great job of walking through that. And like you said, there were recommendations made by you, the board, and thank you for that. We did wanna get a mix of people that have maybe not served, as well as finding some people that may not have any affiliation with the school district at all, or at least, I mean, it's hard to find, you know, even people that, you know, they might have grandchildren or what have you. There might be some sort of attachment. Maybe they don't know a lot about what's going on with the schools. We needed to find people like that. I mean, that's a lot of who the people that vote will be in an election. But we also felt it was important to have some folks that were on the Long Range Facility Planning Committee. And there, you'll see four names there from that committee. I feel it's important to have that context involved with the committee, as well as, you know, on the slide before, just people that are involved in various civic duties and that touch all the different areas of the public, of the public. And so we do have three staff members as well, one from classified, one from certified, and a principal. And I think, I'm not very astute on generations, but I think we actually represent, it represents four distinct generations when you break it down. So we felt like that, all of that was important. And of course, just the mix of in-town and K-8 communities as well, so.
So we tried to choose folks who had multiple skill sets also. So one of our parents from Scott's Mills is also the city manager for Scott's Mills, things like that. So there really was a lot of thought put into this. And I'll, again, answer any questions you might have before you take action on this.
Looks good, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll send it back to you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Scott. All right, so financial report and enrollment report. I'm assuming that that is Steve.
Thank you, Jennifer. Financial statements, we're just two months in, and they're the best time of the year to report, because we've already received 25, or 3, 25% of our state school fund payments for the year, and it's our two lowest expense months of the year. So it's a good, it's always a good start for cash flow. One thing I wanna point out on these statements, both on revenue and expenditures, is on the far right-hand side in the middle there, both for other sources and other objects, is an anomaly when you look at the prior year graph. That represents the sale receipt of the pension obligation. That represents the sale receipt of the pension obligation bond proceeds, which happened last August. Basically, it was a flow-through coming in and then out to the PERS, to PERS, to pay off our unfunded actuarial liability. So that'll just show up there as a apples versus oranges, this year versus last year on that. I'm also excited that, I believe it's Frontline Education bought out Forecast Five Analytics, but the Forecast Five Analytics people are still involved. And over the last year or so, the folks at Forecast Five have worked collaboratively with Oregon business officials to create even more reports and dashboards that we'll be able to roll out through the year. So this might be a look that you'll see still, but there'll be some other pieces of other reports that show more historical data, for example, ones they've created around some of the other funds now that we've been able to get, there's been some chart of account changes with ODE, with SIA and Measure 98, and getting those, they're in the 200 family, but getting those into separate sub-funds. And so it's going to make it easier to present some other reports and even more information more easily and more consistently as we go through the year. So I'm looking forward to that. But I really wanted to center my, most of my comments tonight around enrollment because I know that's, everyone is wondering about that. And we have good news to report, kind of building off the, some of the positive signs we saw towards the end of last school year with kindergarten roundups and calls that we were getting. As of this afternoon, and I did not get this posted till this afternoon because I wanted to wait because we're still so close to the start of school, we are up 155 students from where we ended last school year, which was also our low water mark. So we're up to 3,679, which includes the charter schools. Last year, we ended at 3,524. So we, our decrease from our low water mark was 416. So we've made up 155 or 37.3% of that drop as of right now. Now, we do need to take caution that we're not through the first 10 days of school yet. But Heidi Everly in our office has been working diligently with the schools to call the families of students that didn't show up, that were rolled over in the system. So we're ahead of the game on that, I think, compared to where we usually are. So Heidi felt confident that over 80% of the drops that we would have seen have already occurred in the system and are reflected in this number. But we probably will have some more. The only ones that haven't been dropped are ones that they can't get a hold of. So we have to wait the 10 days until we can drop those students. But where we've been able to verify, they've been dropped. When actually you look at the schools, not including the charter schools, we've actually made up over 40% of our drop at our Silver Falls School District-operated schools. As you know, we do get the funding passed through us for the charter schools. So we do get the total formula revenue for all the students, including the charter schools. And then the charter school gets a percentage of the funding, and the district gets some of that funding to help them with services like special education, technology, and fiscal services, so. Anyhow, looking good. We'll keep an eye on it. We'll get you another update before the next board meeting here, probably next week, after we get through the 10-day period and see where we settle out. And typically, I give a, we usually wait till October 1st. That's our first reporting period with ODE and when things are really settled in. And so I'll continue to cover this monthly, but we'll give our typical October report, which will also include our, where we're sitting at with our inter-district transfers in and out. As you know, we've been a heavy net in migration district, and even though things have changed a little bit, I still expect that to be a positive. But it'll be interesting to see what it looks like now compared to pre-COVID, for example. So we'll get more into that as well next month.
With along the lines of the transfers, you know, Scott, I talked to you about this during the summer about transfers, and they were, I know at a time that they were on hold until we could get our stabilize, our enrollment numbers stabilized in our individual school communities. Have, is there, are transfers back open now for people to transfer in? I mean, I know we set a cap as a board, but are we pushing that number or are we allowing transfers to come in actively at this time?
I think it all depends on both the school and/or the grade. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Leslie. I think we're kind of back into that, or, you know, we used to be. You know, there's some schools that are full, some schools that aren't full, but might be, you know, pushing too many at a certain grade.
You're back in the standard procedures.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's a chart on our website under transfers, and you can see exactly how many openings at each school at each grade level.
Yeah. Okay.
And there's actually two schools at this point that are higher than where we were in June of 2020. And I did rearrange the sheet now. You won't not, we will not see a reference to June 2021. I didn't think it was relevant. We've now had three fiscal year ends since the start of the pandemic, and our low point was actually June of 2022. So I have where we were June 2020, kind of the high mark compared to June 2022 compared to now. So that was the methodology for that.
All right, Steve, is that it?
That's it, thank you.
All right, thanks, Steve.
No, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, so now we're going to head into our discussion items, and we have several tonight. The first one is the Board Superintendent Team Agreement. We worked pretty hard last year, I think, because we were a new board, new board members to really evaluate the document we had on the books. And we spent some good time talking about it and revising it. And this is an opportunity to check in, see how it's been serving us, either propose potential changes or say, I really like it the way it is. And I guess I will open up discussion with that. Would anybody like to lead the discussion?
I'll weigh in. I'll say that the high-level agreements still seem pertinent, even if after reading them for month after month, they sort of seem obvious now, to me at least. But the, I think for me, the question is, are we missing any? Not so much are the ones that we have appropriate? And are there any that, I don't know, if we're going to try to keep the lists nice and short, or do one of these drop off and do we replace it with something else? I don't have in front of me, you know, I think we picked these sort of from.
A list.
Right, some general ideal lists. I don't have that in front of me, but I, it did feel to me from time to time throughout the last year that, you know, and I guess off the top of my head, I'm going to struggle to come up with each individual instance, but where we were not necessarily feeling like we were all following all of these. And so, or maybe more to the point where maybe something might have been missing or something should have been more clear. Kind of rambling, but those are some initial thoughts that I had.
I was just, I mean, I totally get what you're saying, Jonathan, and I'm sitting here thinking of which of these would benefit from being made more specific. But I think they're also clear, you know? I think the intent is clear. And we, and I wouldn't want to overly prescribe actions and responses and, you know, either boxing in Scott or boxing us in. So, I mean, I think so much of this is the spirit of the understanding, the spirit of the agreement. I mean, I think under collaborative governance, working together in good faith, pretty much says it all. You could almost just say, we're either assuming best intentions or we're not, and that's our, that's our goal. As just a point of vocabulary, I really appreciate, under communication agreements, the use of the phrase chain of responsibility. I don't know why we didn't use that below. I think it maybe was just an oversight, but I would love to, chain of command is, I don't know. I appreciate chain of responsibility because what it implies here is, you know, for instance, under communication agreements, board members must follow the chain of responsibility. The superintendent cannot be expected to manage something he doesn't know about, and he has responsibility for that. And so to support and respect his responsibility, we need to be communicating with him. And so I just appreciate that it's not about a command and control. It's about people being responsible for carrying out duties and not being able to do that if they're not getting information. So if there's, if there's a reason we've chosen chain of command at the bottom, I'm open to hearing it, but I prefer the former. But I think the intention here is clear. I don't know that, I didn't see any big gaps.
I think that was an oversight because the whole spirit of that conversation, I remember clearly, that we want to make sure that we use the word responsibility.
Right.
There's one that reads funny. It's a nit, but the, I gotta find it now. Only at certain meetings. Let's see, the board may only make decisions only at properly, it's just a weird sentence. I think we ought to fix it. Because whenever I read it out loud, I trip over it.
Aaron's circling it.
Which one? Which one is it again?
What number is it?
It's number four on collaborative governance. Just delete the second only.
The board may only make decisions. Which line was it?
Number four, it's the board may only make decisions, scratch the second word.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, I've noticed that one, too.
Only may only.
Yeah.
There's one thing that, I mean, there's really two elements of this. One is sort of our collaborative governance, and then the other is, I think, the superintendent's expectations of the board, right? I mean, I want to make sure Scott weighs in on this because this is a, it's something that we all collectively adhere to, both amongst ourselves, but with Scott. And then the reverse of that is Scott amongst us and us towards him, right? So I think, I think that's an important point that we need to make sure we hear from.
Well, I appreciate that, Jonathan. I think that, I think for the most part, we've done a really good job meeting those five expectations. I do feel really strongly that the boards share in the celebrations of our work and also share in the challenges of our work. And I do feel confident, and I've been very, very surprised at the, at just the amount of willingness that each of you has, in addition to your professional responsibilities, to basically drop anything you're doing to help us. And I just want to make sure that I publicly thank you for that because it is so noticed, and each one of you does that. And so I'm very, very thankful for that. I would say that I agree with the agreements. This kind of has to do with the willingness to abide by its own rules. And that is, if we are setting agreements as a board superintendent team, because you are my team number one, as you learned in our Leadership Institute, that we talk about how important it is when things break down, communication-wise. And how can we make sure that we are holding each other accountable for clear communication? And my reason for that is really simple because the only reason why we're here, sitting in this room right now, is for kids. Without kids, we would all be doing other things in life. And we are here out of our public service to kids, and we are modeling that behavior for them. So it's no different in an elementary school, in a middle school, or in a high school when we set community agreements, or team norms, or team agreements, whether we're in a reading group and we have group agreements. It's the same thing for a board superintendent agreement. And when those agreements, inevitably with nine strong personalities, we're going to have breakdowns in communication at times, and most of which might even be clearly, just completely out of the passion that we have for public education and for our kids here in Silver Falls, what do we do then? Because I don't think it's enough to say, we'll just figure it out in the moment. The reason why we have agreements is to take the emotion out of that, to say, this makes sense right now, and we don't know when the breakdown is going to come. But I think it all needs to go back to, what do we do to model our adult behavior for kids? And how do we hold ourselves accountable in the highest professional way that we can?
Yeah, Scott, I'm glad you brought that up because I was, I've circled number three under the communication agreements, the third tenant there, basically. And about, you know, when you were talking about communication, because I think it's so key, you know, and I think part of the reason why, I think especially over the last year plus, our board has done a good, good job in staying on task and getting good, you know, business done for our kids, is we've done a good job communicating. But inevitably, communication is going to break down. It happens. We're human, right? And you have to have that baseline of, like you said, Scott, of a method of how do we overcome that? You know, we all have those issues, whether it be with our family, with, you know, coworkers, like, we're going to have disagreements, and that's healthy. That's not a bad thing. You know, it ties in what we talked about this summer, Leadership Institute, Scott, the five dysfunctions of a team, right? And that baseline of that pyramid, the foundation, was a lack of trust. And I think we all aren't, you know, we're not all best buds, right? But we have, we have a job to do professionally together as a board and as a superintendent and as a district team. And we have to, we have to ascribe to committing to having a baseline of professional trust. It doesn't mean we're going to be each other's confidants. It doesn't mean we're going to be each other's best buds, right? But what it does mean is that we professionally commit to saying, we're going to have a baseline level of trust here at the job and the task we have at hand as board members and as the district, district staff and district leadership team. So I think when it comes to it, we have to trust one another that if we have an issue with one another, we have to have that trust to one-on-one address it. You know, and I think it says, right, you know, it says right here under number three that we must communicate one-on-one with any board member of a board superintendent team as appropriate. So I think we really have to make sure we're committing to, if we as individual board members ruffle each other's feathers, we have the trust and the baseline, you know, baseline trust that when we approach another board member, that that board member will talk to us about that, right? I think, you know, if Scott has a problem with one of us, maybe we said something that, you know, that he didn't understand, or maybe it, maybe it, you know, frustrated him a bit. He should have the leeway to come to each one of us individually, saying, hey, Aaron, I don't understand what you said. Can you help me? Because I might be interpreting this the wrong way. So I really think we need to hone, especially onto this one, because I think creating that baseline professional trust within our, within our group here is so key because disagreements will arise. And it's okay to have those, but I think we need to have the courage here to, to address those one-on-one, so those things don't, those little things, disagreements, misunderstandings, don't blossom into large fires to the point where we can't communicate.
Just to connect this back to your comment, Jonathan, and thank you, Aaron, sorry to jump in, but, and the five expectations that I've outlined have 100% connection to that point there. And you had asked me, Jonathan, what my thoughts were on the superintendent's expectations of the board. This is the same expectation we expect of all leaders in Silver Falls. It's the same expectation that our leaders expect from their staffs at their schools and in their professional learning communities. And it's the same expectation that our teachers expect of their classes with their students.
I like it. I mean, it really doesn't, it doesn't need any major changes. I just like it.
For what I'm hearing from Scott is that, I mean, he's really challenging us to up the ante a little bit here. And it's not just a document, it's something that we actually adhere to and create meaning around. And I guess I would agree that number three- And I guess I would agree that number three is the one thing that I would say we might be able to clarify through our discussion. I really am connecting Janet's comment about good faith to Aaron's comment about lack of trust. And, you know, we do have to do hard things. That's one of the things, we were elected to do hard things, and this is kind of a chance to level up a little bit in our relationships. And I will say, I do appreciate number three a lot. I've learned more about not triangulating, like going to the person before I go to anybody else on this as, you know, a board member than any other experience. So I'm wondering if there are things we can do with number three to just clarify, like what does that actually, actually mean to everybody? Because I had, there has been, you know, instances where I think there might not have been agreement around number three.
So if I can, Jennifer, I was wondering what Aaron was talking to. Are you guys suggesting creating some kind of a process, a more formal process then? Or like when you say clarify, because that's what comes to my mind when you say that when Aaron was talking. Is there some process that we want to talk about in place? Or is it just, is it just more like the rest of it where it's, I wouldn't say aspirational, it's not the right word, but, you know, there's not anything?
Well, what does one-on-one mean? That's a question I have.
I mean, in my mind, it means one-on-one trying to initiate a conversation. And I don't, I don't think good conversation happens through email. I think maybe an email or written, you know, correspondence or a text or whatever to, maybe to a board member, to a leadership team member. Hey, you know, Steve, can we chat? You know, something, I want to just run by you. But I think that should be done either on the phone or in person. That, to me, is what one-on-one means, because it shouldn't be done in text or email at all. Especially if there's a perception there's a communication breakdown.
I think for the, on the trust issue, for me, it's a matter of feeling comfortable and confident that if I reach out to a colleague on a difficult issue, that that will be a safe place, you know, relatively speaking, right? And, you know, I can't count how many really vigorous debates I've had over the phone and online with Jonathan on issues that were really, really critical and important, and about which we fundamentally disagreed. And I know that I can call him tonight and have another conversation. And that we'll be able to discuss it, and we'll end that discussion amicably and professionally. And so I think there's that, it's to your point that you made about professional trust. I think that's a good way to put it, because we are going to disagree, but you're never going to reach out if you're going, if you think that that individual is going to treat you unfairly or reprimand you, or shame you, or call you out in the next meeting. That's it. That's over. You'll never do it again. And that's really what I rely on, is that I can reach out to colleagues and have those conversations, and that they will be received in the way that they're offered, which is to forward our mutual understanding and to be able to say, hey, I'm really wrestling with this. I know I disagree with you on it. I want to hear your perspective. And know that that's genuine. So I think that's where that trust is built.
One thing, and I don't want to, I don't want to move away from your point about number three, but I want to mention that there's a related element to number three, which is, when a board member and/or the superintendent has an individual concern, well, one thing that I've seen happen occasionally is, you know, we'll have a lengthy discussion about something, and everybody's head nodding, or we're talking about it. Yes, yes, everybody. And then the next day, the next week, one or more board members is openly talking very differently than we talked in public. That, I don't know if that falls under surprise, but it does create challenges.
Maybe undermines trust.
Undermines trust, for sure.
Because of unpredictability.
Right. So I don't know where that fits. No, this is just a conversation. I don't know which one of these it fits in, but that felt to me like maybe one of the missing elements, and I don't know how to capture that.
Well, I think it comes, maybe comes back to creating an environment to the extent that we can of that safety, so that when people do disagree, they feel safe and comfortable airing that dissent in our meetings, rather than feeling like, oh, well, I really don't like this, where this direction is going, but I'm just going to sit quietly, because I don't feel safe articulating that. And then later on, it will come out in whatever form it comes out. And so I think that's the onus on all of them, excuse me, on all of us, to contribute to that environment where everyone feels safe to say, hey, I may be up against the majority right now, but I've got to say I'm really uncomfortable with this. And to feel that that's absolutely appropriate. And in fact, to a certain extent, your responsibility.
It is.
To air that dissent, right?
Absolutely.
I think that it is, it is our responsibility if we disagree to say something, because if we don't say anything, there's an assumed agreement. And so I think that that's a really important piece to remember. Thanks for bringing that up.
I don't want to, you know, bog this, this, you know, especially on number three, operating agreement, to make it like policies and rules and regs, so to speak. But I think this number three is so critical that, hey, we've, I think we're hearing here that we're all willing to affirm that professional level of trust, that if we need to address things one-on-one, we have that open door with all of us and the leadership team. What happens if that breaks down? What if, what if you do reach out to somebody and they don't want to talk to you? Where do we go next? You know? I think that's a fair, a fair what-if potential scenario, right? We want to avoid that at all costs, and I think we can, but it could happen. So what do we do in that scenario? Do we, is that where you get the board chair and vice chair involved? Or, you know, we're all adults, and we don't need necessarily, hopefully, somebody to solve our problems for us, right? I think we're all on the level that we can, we can solve these problems. But, you know, it might happen. So what do we do? Do we need to put something in there about that? Is there a step process where, okay, if someone always wants to communicate one-on-one, that, you know, chair and/or vice chair then gets involved? And, you know, then if that doesn't work, does it go to open discussion in a board meeting? You know, a lot of what-ifs. But, you know, do we need to have that talked about? Do we need to have that put in this on number three?
On a practical note, there's, you know, we're an interesting type of governing body, right? I mean, we're kind of thrown together, we're elected, occasionally appointed, but usually elected. And we have limited capacity. Jennifer, and I just cannot agree on something. We can, we can talk, or we can get to one where we don't want to talk, but ultimately, we're both still on the board, right? I mean, you know, so there's limits to what a board can do. We can talk about this agreement. This agreement isn't technically binding. You're still on the board if you violate this agreement. So one of the things, ultimately based on the training I received, there really is only one outside of, you know, somebody who's, you know, criminal acts and things like that. But there's only, censure is the only action a board is allowed, I believe, to really take in terms of an official act. And that doesn't even remove a board member, right? That just is basically publicly distancing yourself as a board from one of the board members. That's really all it amounts to. And it's come up occasionally in the past, but I'm not trying to downplay the importance of this. I'm just pointing out, from a practical perspective, as much as we want to talk about it, there are only a handful of sort of ultimate remedies. And it isn't even remedies, just actions.
And at least in my opinion, a censure has never felt productive. It's never felt good. It's never felt restorative. It's never felt like it would bring the board closer together. It's always just felt almost sort of like the nuclear option of just the final line in the sand. That's it. You're out. We've just decided, you know, we've exiled you, whoever you are. I would really, you know, it would be great if there was another option that would feel less ugly, you know? Maybe there's a way around our restorative framework that we can start thinking about. What practices could we put in place that would allow us to have that healthy dialogue? And repair any rifts that we felt were getting in the way of us conducting business, right? Because to your point, Jonathan, you know, we're not necessarily, don't need to all be besties, but we need to be able to work together productively without bad feelings or hidden agendas, or withholding information, or resentments, or whatever those things are that make it difficult for us to do our work and provide Scott with the direction and the guidance that he needs.
I think you hit it right, right on the head, Janet. And it goes back to us modeling the behavior we expect from kids. And we know that reactive discipline does not work. And there's a whole mountain of evidence to tell us it doesn't work. And the same would go in this case, that even if it did get to a nuclear option, we still don't need to follow the agreement. But that's not what we're about. We want to spend our time on the other end of the continuum, being inspired by each other. And you become inspired by being part of something bigger than yourself. You become inspired by becoming something bigger than yourself, or being a part of something bigger than yourself. And the whole essence of teamwork is to put your own personal needs aside for the good of the organization or the team. That's what we're all about. What we're after here at the end of the day in Silver Falls is what is the best action we can take for the children of Silver Falls School District? And however we get there, however messy that might be, are we committed to getting to the right answer? And that can only come from healthy conversation and debate and holding each other accountable. Otherwise, we're just a bunch of individuals with our own self-interests in mind. We will never reach our goals of the strategic plan or the vision that we have for Silver Falls. So I would like to concentrate on that end of the spectrum to say what, to focus on those things that inspire our public, because that's what they expect of us.
Yeah, I want to just follow that too a little bit, because if I'm not mistaken, we are expecting our teacher teams to hold each other accountable. I know that there's a protocol in my school district where grade, like grade-level teams meet, and they have to create norms, and then the what do you do when the norms are broken? And it's really uncomfortable sometimes to come up with those kinds of things, but I think that, somebody said it, I can't remember who it was, but it's going to happen. Norms are going to be broken, so be prepared in how you're going to deal with it. And one team I worked with, they had a code word, I think some of you have heard this before, that during their meeting, if somebody was not following the norms, somebody would call out chimichanga. And that was the, like, clue. I've also had, this is in wrap it up, because the norm was be careful with your words. And if you're going on and on, we, you know, we got to get to the next thing. So those are two that are not too, you know, hard to do. And so, and generally, I think most of the time, we're not talking about during meetings, but maybe we are talking about during meetings. I think that it's not just me, and I told you all this, on the night that we elected board officers. I am not going to police everybody. We have to police each other. And I don't even like the word police. Let's, you know, try to hold each other accountable. Because, and it's not, it's not always comfortable, but I think it's okay, and we have to make it okay. And it's, you know, it's not a big deal. Like, the chimichanga thing was like, we made a funny word, because it's just not a big deal, but we do want to, you know, nudge things towards the norms. So anyway, I'm not sure if that made sense, but I want to ask another question. Aaron talked about his preference for face-to-face or a phone call. What do we think about that? Because I agree. I don't, I don't prefer email on uncomfortable situations. It's not been good for me in the past, and so I'm kind of shifted to, you know, just making sure that it's an in-person conversation or a phone call. And I think Aaron, you know, mentioned the same. What do others think?
No argument from me.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, sometimes for me, I actually do better if I sit down and write it. Definitely not on a text. But sometimes writing it helps me actually process. I'm not one that usually, you know, flies emails real fast, but... So I think maybe a little bit of discretion, but generally, one-on-one, where you can hear each other's voices best, I think.
Yeah, generally, yeah, one-on-one, face-to-face is almost always better than an email, because otherwise, we're public officials, it's public record, and it kind of gets to be a boxing match, and you're trying to, it can devolve quickly into trying to box somebody in. Whereas a conversation is just a conversation, and you can say something wrong without, and then you can correct it. If it sends, you can't correct it. It's just more natural if you need a conversation.
I think that what Owen brought up with, some of you might feel comfortable writing it down, what I think I heard from Owen is, the best scenario would be to write it down as in terms of, this is a thinking I want to share with you when we talk. So that would be kind of the high-level type of thing. And then you have something to go by once, once you're having a discussion. And I know I've had that with most of you, and it's very helpful. But of course, the key is the personal touch.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, I sort of default to that, especially if it's a complex topic, just to be able to clearly describe where my thinking is and lay it out, so as not to be, you know, all over the map. And then to be able to say, okay, so here's the context, here's the background. Now, can we get together and, you know, touch base and talk, that kind of thing? But I'm with you, it helps to process.
I'd say you're really good at bringing topics up in a very non-threatening kind of way. You're really, really good at that.
Thank you.
I want to learn from you. All right, well, I'm not hearing a ton of momentum for making changes. We've got that chain of responsibility one. We have, there was one other one, the only-only issue. And then the number three, are we still okay with one-on-one? Do we want to say phone or face-to-face, or is it good the way it is?
I think that's a good discussion on it. I don't know if we need to put actual qualifiers in it. I think, I think we all, we all have kind of established what one-on-one means. At least I'm hearing that from, I think I'm hearing it from everybody. My thought would be is making sure that, okay, now that we've reviewed this document several of the different key themes and tenants under here, that we're all on board with agreeing and committing ourselves to this. You know, I want to make sure that we're, you know, we're all on board with this.
The only thing that I would add is, you know, that we touched on possibly developing some protocols. And I wonder if one of the easiest ones to do would be to say, if any of us is feeling like there's a lack of, well, there's some disconnect, or we're maybe not tracking together, or something has happened and we're feeling just sort of edgy, that we would make a point to say, let's talk about this in the next work session. Like, let's just, whatever, like, just give ourselves an opportunity as a group to say, hey, how's everyone doing? Let's check in. How's everyone feeling? We've just been through a difficult thing, or we've just made a really hard decision, or we're up against something that we're going to have to decide in the future. Giving ourselves a little bit of time at a work session where it feels a little bit more relaxed to just kind of do that collective check-in, rather than making it personal about one individual's behavior or another, just giving us, giving us some time. And that certainly feels comfortable to me in terms of just bringing that up and saying, hey, can we have time for the next work session? We need to, we need to kind of like collect ourselves, you know?
I'm, I am totally open to that. My bias or, I don't know, I don't think that's the right word. But what I tend to not want to do is rehash things that have happened in the past. It's like, to me, that's happened in my board experience and I don't think it's productive at all. And so I would try to keep that piece, you know.
Focused or specific or?
Yeah, I mean, and maybe it does have to happen where we have to go back and review something that has happened, but I just, I, I find that thinking about moving forward is more productive. Other thoughts about Janet's idea about, let's take a look at this at the next work session and talk it out?
I think that would be only, and let me put a caveat on what you were saying in the sense that it would be only if we felt it was impeding us from moving forward. In other words, we're having a really hard time doing what we need to do. And I don't imagine this is going to happen very often. This isn't going to be like every month, all right, everybody, air your grievances. It's, it's if we are finding that there's, there is something sticking here, guys, and we're not doing the work we need to do or we're just out of sorts. All right, everybody, come on.
We sense that there's a little bit of a boiling point being hit.
Right, right.
As long as it doesn't turn into Oprah, I'm not an Oprah fan.
I'm on board. We can do on it, we don't have to vote on that or anything like that.
I don't have any issue either with it. I, I liked both your points, right? At some level, I mean, we have to bring it up as a board if it's a recurring problem, right? As opposed to, we're just going to move forward, oh, we're just going to move forward, oh, we're just going to move forward. I mean, that doesn't always work. And so at some point, those conversations, to Janet's point, have to, have to happen. But Jennifer's not wrong. You know, it's, it also can be rehashing and are we really moving ourselves forward? I don't know, right? I mean, there's a fine line, I don't know where it is.
But talking about it helps.
Talking about it helps.
I mean, we're talking right now about where those, how we all come to the shared understanding, which might not be exactly perfect, but at least we're some steps closer.
It's just a built-in pressure release valve, really. I mean, and we can activate it or not, but it's just allowing, to your guy, to your point about protocols and or processes or how do we, what do we do when it inevitably happens? I'm certainly open to us working on that idea and thinking of other things that we could potentially do, but this, this feels at least like low-hanging fruit.
I have to say, I tend to feel less pressured for protocols in times like now when I feel like things are working pretty well. And I feel like we've got a board chair and a vice chair and a superintendent that have emotional intelligence, they're connected. And I just trust that if we had some things that were hanging us up, you would recognize that and you would put that on, you know, you would bring that to us. So, but then again, that's kind of leaves you at a reactionary point too, where if something, you know, isn't going well, we don't have a protocol in place. But I, I do tend to favor probably less protocol and more relying on, on that happening.
Good judgment.
Well, I'm going to bring one more thing back up because you said something that sort of helped coalesce it for me. I wonder if we could add something, either a number four or modify one of the existing ones. I think we do have the responsibility as elected officials to air our concerns in the appropriate meetings if we have them. I do not think it's appropriate to wait till after and then throw stones. I think we have that responsibility. And it's not fair to any of the other board members. I want to hear, if we don't agree, make your case, convince me, let's, let's have the conversation. But I can't, I can't change my opinion if you haven't shared your reasoning with me why you disagree. And I think we owe that to ourselves collectively. And so maybe that feels like a really top-level bullet item to me is that that's a responsibility of a board member, right? We owe it to each other. And I don't know what that, you know, we could word submit that maybe offline, but if people were amenable to it, I wouldn't mind seeing one like that up there.
I am 100% behind that line of thinking, that our, our public expects that of us. Expectes it of me, you expect it of me as a public servant to give you the truth. And I don't think there's anything we can't say, as long as we think clearly about the words that we choose and staying focused on the topic at hand and not making it about any sort of personal personality trait or conflict of an individual, but we're staying focused on the task at hand. And that's where teams are the ultimate competitive edge, when they can remain focused on that. So I would love to see our school board do that because the more that you do it as a board, as a seven-member board, the more willing I will be to do it. Because I report to you. I'm your humble servant.
So thinking back about Janet's comments about a safe place, I was thinking, well, how do we move forward on that? And perhaps that's one way you do move forward is people take risks and make sure that they, if they don't, if the discussion does not include some important thought that they have, that they speak up and then it's just normalized that we do that. Because again, we do not all have to agree. That is, that is not our, our job. But our job is, we were elected as, you know, this conversation's kind of gone, to give our input. And if we don't give our input, we're not doing our job.
And nobody has to give their input. That's not required. But then I don't want to hear about it the next day.
Right.
This is, this is the chance to do that.
Lori, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, isn't that usually reflected in the vote? I mean, one doesn't always have to argue hard, but they, but a board member does provide their vote. As far as something, when they disagree or agree, usually that's where the most effectiveness is, I guess with board members taking theirs. So I, the rest of the conversation, I'm not, I'm not quite connected to. So I just see it more that we've all been respectful to each other in the meetings. And I think that's fantastic. But I don't feel that it is my job to police anybody. And I think especially when we are private individuals at some times and then we're elected up here. And those are two different worlds, in my opinion, and I just don't want those to become gray and convoluted. So I guess I rest more on my vote because that is why we're here, to find out where the board majority or not is. So that's my take. That's it.
Responses?
Isn't that at some point, should we not give rationale for our vote? Isn't, do we have obligations? One word coming to me, maybe it's a little bit strong of a word. Do we not have the professional courtesy as board members to at least state our opinions when, when we make a vote though? And shouldn't we try to explain that at least to our, to the rest of our, our board team here, you know? So don't we have a duty to do that in some respect?
Not always. I think sometimes our vote is just that. I don't think it always needs to be explained. I disagree with that.
In the board training that I've had with OSBA, it's always been a strong recommendation that board members explain their rationale behind their vote. And if you're, as I mentioned earlier, if you're not saying anything, it means that you are agreeing with the discussion. And so it's, it's the responsibility of the board member to speak up because we don't know if you, and, and we can't, well, A, a team member not participating weakens the team because everybody brings a really distinct, important viewpoint to the board. And if we're not hearing it, we can't make the best decisions. So I think that's one point to, to point out. Anyway, that's just, that's my take on what I've learned at board, board trainings.
Well, and there, and there may be other reasons as well, but it just strikes me that the, you know, if you, if you aren't sharing, and you're not, or if you're not sharing a reason, it really eviscerates that trust. So you either build trust by sharing a contrarian point of view and, you know, voting however your conscience wants you to. Or, and I think that builds trust, frankly, and it also builds trust to, you know, to agree and to vote, you know, the way that you're, that you're, well, I say, people can vote however they want, they're totally entitled to that. But I just think participating honestly in the conversation and forthrightly in the conversation builds trust. And that's really, thanks to Scott, we, I know, no, it's the most important thing in teams.
And we're voting to approve this tonight, is that correct?
It's not on the action items. We could if we wanted to, we don't have to.
Well, I'm just wondering if, I think this is a really valuable conversation. I'm just wondering if we can give some thought to wording something like what Jonathan suggested, but using similar wording to number two, which is will endeavor to, rather than must. So board members will endeavor to express their dissent or discomfort on a topic so that the board can benefit from their perspective, you know, keep it really positive because really that's the whole point of it, is so that we can understand what we're missing, right? I think there's a way to word it so that it's not a mandate, but that it encourages board members to say, to know, this is, this is why you're here, is so that we can hear from you. But if, if people are uncomfortable or don't feel, you know, that they want to share, then certainly we're not going to tie anyone down and make them speak. So, so I just wonder if maybe, maybe, I think this has been a great conversation, maybe we can kind of put a pin in that and get, that get some wording for next time when we, when we'll get ready to approve it. Does that?
Do you want to take the lead on that, Janet?
Sure, it's like a sentence, so yeah. Easy.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. All right. Any last thoughts before we move on? Thank you for helping us reach a concluding point, Janet.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, so our next discussion item is 10B, the Bond Advisory Committee Members. Scott showed us the slide. We had a chance to talk during that presentation, but this is another chance, so I'll open it up. Anybody want to say anything more about the makeup of the group? All right, we will move on then to the charge. Same thing, we discussed it a bit earlier, but this is another opportunity to discuss.
I just want to reiterate kind of what we heard earlier, Scott, very clear, very transparent. And yeah, well, well done on, on helping put that all together. And it's crystal clear what the bond committee's task is before them, so thank you.
And also a great example of responding to feedback. Because we got a lot of feedback, not necessarily positive, about the long-range committee process, facilities committee process. And so I think that this is an awesome example of being transparent. Say, hey, you know, we, we think we can do better and we're going to do it now. So thank you very much.
I do have one question slash request, Scott, for your, for Jennifer and Owen and myself. I would look to some guidance from you as to how you want us to bring any information back to the board as this group meets? Or whether you would prefer those members do it themselves? Like, you know, to what extent do you want us to?
Sure, no, that's a, that's a really good question. I, I think we're going to need to see how the meetings go. I, of course, am going to be the liaison to the board, but I can't imagine reporting back to the board on progress of the committee without involving the three of you as well. So we'll just need to work together on that.
See how that plays out, for sure.
All right, well, we will be voting on that in just a bit. The Options GED program, we had a presentation last meeting and this is another opportunity, if you had any other questions or comments for our staff about the document that they shared last time. The next thing is the Budget Committee Vacancies. And I actually just have to admit that I just blew by that in my preparation. And so I'm going to have to look this up. Debbie brought this to us because it's just one of those things that we have to do on a regular basis. So we do have vacancies. You can see, if you open up the document, that there are seven members and five of them still have time left on their term. But two, their term, their terms expire June 30th, 2022. And so if it expires June 2022, they will meet with us for this next board, no?
No, they've already passed.
They, they're, they're expired.
They've expired.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, because it's 2022, but it was June 30th. Okay, so those two are expired and those two individuals can reapply, but so can anybody else in our community. And we will consider all of the applications according to our policy around Budget Committee. Any discussion on that? All right. Moving back to discussion items, we have a bunch of third reads on our policy updates. We did not have any discussion on the second reading. Is there anybody who's found anything that they want to bring up at this third read? All right, we're going to be voting on those as a block then in just a bit, if somebody wants to propose that when it's time. We don't have board reports. It is now our second public comment time. So if you'd like to speak during public comment and you're attending virtually, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom.
And we do have Eliza with her hand raised.
Oh, all right, Eliza. Let's hear from Eliza and you're going to keep time, right?
And I believe, Eliza, you are promoted as panelist now.
Eliza, can you hear us?
It's not, it's, it's, it's all accidental. I'm so sorry, you guys. Thank you for your commitment to our board scene. I appreciate you, thank you, goodnight.
We'll just consider it a high five.
All right, I'm going to move on then. We are at action items, so I'm going to list the topic and I am going to expect that somebody is going to make a motion and will second, and then we will vote on each item.
Can I make a point of order?
Yes.
Is it policies?
Yeah.
I just noticed them not listed on the action.
So we'll, we can, we can still do that, let's do that as 13D.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So let's not forget. All right, so 13A, um, is the Bond Advisory Committee Members item.
I move that we, uh, accept the Bond Advisory Committee Members as presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the Bond Advisory Committee Members as presented. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Owen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
All in favor.
13B, Bond Advisory Committee Charge.
I move that we accept the Silver Falls School District Bond Advisory Committee Charge as presented by our superintendent.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the Bond Advisory Committee Charge as presented by the superintendent. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Owen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
All in favor.
And 13C, the Options GED Program.
Uh, I move to approve the GED options application for Sequoia Falls Academy and the Silver Falls School District.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the GED options application for the Sequoia Falls Academy and Silver Falls School District. Uh, any discussion? Let's vote.
Owen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
All in favor.
And 13D is the policy package that was presented tonight.
I move to approve the policies, uh, policy updates as presented tonight.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we, uh, what was the verb you used? I don't know, adopt, accept?
Uh, approve the policies.
Approve, the policy updates, um, as presented tonight. Any discussions? Let's vote.
Owen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
All in favor.
And number 14, Future Agenda Item Request. I know that we still have one from the last meeting that we're gonna talk about, um, potentially during the next work session. Our next work session is, seems like it's getting a little weighty, but, um, I think we're gonna try to talk about that the next work session. Um, but are there any other, um, requests from anybody? All right. If there is no objection, meeting adjourned.